City Council meeting for August 25th in order. Sue, can we begin with a roll call?
Councilmember Norton. Councilmember Norton. Councilmember Harland.
Here.
Councilmember Germany.
Here.
Mayor Botshorf.
Here. Can we all rise and give the pleasure of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, I believe we're going to begin with the introduction of a new worker in the Public Works Department, which will be done by Matt. Come on up, Matt. Right there, so everybody can see. We're proud of our employees.
Hi, my name is Matt Cotilla. I'm the field supervisor for Public Works, and it's my pleasure tonight to introduce to everybody Christopher Macias. He's from Morgan Hill, started with us at the end of July, and he's got a good attention to detail and a hard worker, level-headed individual, and I'll let Chris say a couple of words.
Welcome, Chris.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure to work here, even though it's only been a short amount of time. I pretty much am a hard worker. I do what I can, I do the best that I can. I learn to, I plan to grow my skills and offer whatever skills and knowledge I have to the city to be a good asset to my coworkers and the city as a whole. And I just look forward to grow and basically between myself, my coworkers, and the city to develop a very professional and a, I guess you could say, a very, a good relationship.
That's great to hear. Questions, comments? Yeah, welcome.
Welcome.
Good luck, hope you enjoy it. Glad to have you. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.[351.12][351.12](APPLAUSE).
This is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and we're going to have a presentation with Annabelle Diaz. Is Annabelle here? Come on up, Annabelle. You get to come all the way up. Our camera's right there, so stand over here. We're going to read a little mayor's proclamation. This is honoring Jacob's Heart Children's Cancer Support Services and a proclamation for September 2016 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas the city of Capitola strives to help our children enjoy long, happy, and healthy lives, and each day 42 children in the United States are diagnosed with cancer and more than 40,000 children undergo treatment for cancer each year. In spite of the continued improvement of a five-year survival rates for childhood cancer remains the leading cause of death by disease among children more than asthma, diabetes, cystic fibrosis, congenital anomalies, and AIDS combined. Families of children with cancer in the city of Capitola receive essential services from Jacob's Heart Cancer Support Services, a local organization that has been honored with national awards and recognition for improving the quality of life for more than 620 local children with cancer and their families. Jacob's Heart helps preserve the memories and honor the legacies of 140 children from our community who have been lost to cancer. The oncology department at Lucille Packard Children's Hospital at Stanford has worked closely with Jacob's Heart for the past 18 years as a trusted community partner in providing family-centered care that addresses the emotional, practical, and financial struggles of family of children with cancer in Capitola. And three of us have actually been there to witness what they do. It's a remarkable facility. It is important to all Capitola residents to recognize the impact of pediatric cancer on families within our community and honor the lives of children in our community whose lives have been cut short by cancer. Therefore, I, Mayor of Capitola, do hereby declare September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Capitola and do hereby honor Jacob's Heart Cancer Support Services for 18 years of outstanding support to local children fighting cancer and their families.[500.31][500.31](APPLAUSE).
Yeah, I wanted to say a couple of words. I wanted to go ahead and invite you to our courageous carnival that's going to take place in September 25th in the city plaza in Watsonville, so if you have any kids or grandkids, go ahead and bring them by. And this way, we can go ahead and create awareness of children in our community that have cancer. And we also went ahead and brought in cystic fibrosis and other children with other illnesses. So thank you so much for your support. Thank you, Mary, and the city council members. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Annabelle. Thank you. And this is for you. Okay, next we have a presentation by Maggie Ivy, Chief Executive Officer at Santa Cruz County Conference and Visitors Council. Welcome, Maggie.
Mayor Botshorf, city council members, thank you for having us this evening. We're just here to share a little bit of good news and some creative content about Capitola. So first, a little bit about the state of the industry. Everyone always wants to know how is tourism doing, other than how you're feeling about trying to drive around town in the summertime. But the news is good. You know, 2015 was a pretty amazing year for the central coast in general. We didn't have any rain. We had amazing weather. There was no snow, so not only did the coastal people come here, but the skiers came in 2015. So 2016, we were a little bit nervous about how we were going to compare. You know, you always want to go up, 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 but things are going very well. We're holding our own. Year-to-date occupancy on a calendar year is at 68%. June county-wide average was 80%. In July, the hotel occupancy averaged 85%. So we're doing very well. Hearing good news from the hotels, hoping to finish strong in August. Our mission, of course, is to really drive the off-season and try to fill that in, especially the shoulder season. So we're off of a spring campaign this last spring, which was fantastic. We had the highest response from consumers ever on our vacation getaway contest, which is promoted primarily to the drive market in Northern California. We're about to launch the fall campaign, which is focused on fall festivals, which of course includes the Capitola Begonia Festival and the Capitola Art and Wine Festival. So the fall season's all about the good weather, all of the activity's still going on. We start this promotion actually in August to try to form what's called a bounce back, so the hotels can work with us and try to get our August and summer visitors to come back in the fall. In addition to that, we're working quite aggressively on the international market. As you might have heard, a lot of new non-stop flights are coming in to San Jose International Airport. So Visit Santa Cruz County is working with Visit San Jose, the airport, and Monterey Convention and Visitors Bureau, and we're really excited about this regional approach and positioning ourselves in countries like the UK and Germany in particular for our area, we think, is a great opportunity for us, and leveraging our dollars with some bigger players. But we're all at the table together and working together. Tonight, we're going to share a little bit of our content. That is the new sort of lingo in the tourism marketing industry. It's all about content. Content is king. And really, that's just another way of saying how we tell our story. So content is our blog, of course, the website, it's great photography, which is so easy in terms of how to present Capitola and the community at large. But maybe the fastest-growing content online in terms of consumer interest is video. And we're finding ourselves tapping into local talent. We're really excited about some of the new video productions. So tonight, I'm going to introduce Christina Glenn. She's our communications director, and she's going to present a new video to you and also talk about some of the local partnership that goes into making this happen. So Christina?
Thank you, Maggie. Good evening. My name is Christina Glenn. I'm the communications director with Visit Santa Cruz County. As Maggie mentioned, content is king, and we are strategically creating on an ongoing basis content for our website, for our social media platforms, content that we can share at trade and media events that we attend in partnership with Visit California. We have representation in the UK on the trade and public relations side with the same agency that Visit California uses, and these are all tools and ways that we tell the story of our destination. So to that end, we have a lot of stories to tell and a lot of different destinations and themes within our county to cover. So as Maggie mentioned, the quickest way and the easiest way in this short-attention-span society is through pictures and video. So I would like to introduce Julia Godinsky with Mobile Ranger. And Jess and Ben Chargin with Chargin Productions. You are also here. So these two groups of people are, represent the production end of things and the content end of things. Mobile Ranger has partnered with Visit Santa Cruz, and it's an app that provides do-it-yourself tours that you can take on your mobile phone. And one of those tours happens to cover Capitola, so we thought it would be a good way to tell the Capitola story, the Mobile Ranger story, and a little bit about Davenport also. So we'd like to share that video with you today. Today's the official launch of the video, so we'll be pushing that content out on our social media platforms and on our website as well. And again, it's a really quick and easy way to kind of tell the world about who we are and what we do.
Hi, I'm Jess.
And I'm Ben.
Today, we're checking out Santa Cruz County in a fresh, new, and exciting way.
So come on, let's cruise. Come along with us as we explore the Mediterranean-inspired beach town of Capitola, and then we'll head out to Davenport on Santa Cruz County's north coast.
We're here in one of Santa Cruz County's charming seaside jets, Capitola. We're going to take you on a do-it-yourself tour with the Mobile Ranger app as our historical We'll check out the city's rich history and beautiful works of public art that make Capitola unique. From strolling Capitola villages pedestrian-friendly esplanade to the scenic vistas from the Capitola Wharf, this cool little beach town has something for everyone. Capitola is California's oldest seaside resort town. Here, you're just steps away from the beach, shops, and restaurants of Capitola Village. This area is filled with historic landmarks, including the Saffron Avenue Bridge that was built in 1934. It replaced an old wooden bridge that was built in the late 1800s for horse and wagon. Another landmark is the Capitola Wharf. Back in 1895, a man named Emil Gerlock used the Capitola Wharf in hopes of harnessing electrical power by wave motor. His experiment failed, but today, we still get to use the wharf for recreation and beautiful sights. You could rent a boat or supplies for fishing, and you can launch your stand-up paddleboard or kayak from right here on the wharf. After soaking up the flavor of the town, grab a bite to eat and take a stroll to see other historical landmarks around Capitola. Like this spot right here. This building used to be the original city hall back in 1949. To delve deeper into the history of Capitola, make sure you visit the Capitola Historical The next stop on our DIY tour takes us to the north coast of Santa Cruz County. Don't forget to pull over and get the full experience of what this area has to offer with beautiful scenery along Highway 1. So we just arrived in Davenport. Davenport was settled in 1868 when Captain John Davenport, a sea-based whaler, built a 450-foot wharf off what is now Davenport Landing. The town was formed around the cement plants housed workers, and by 1915, had a population of 1,800 people of diverse backgrounds with over 20 different languages spoken in this one town. Today, Davenport's beaches are well-known for sea blocks, and these cliffs are great spots for catching sight of migrating whales. In 1915, the St. Vincent de Paul Church was made with donated materials and labor from the community, and a two-cell county jail was constructed. Just enough space for you and me. The jail was only used once before it was decommissioned in 1936, and then it was transformed into a museum in 1987. After a full day of sightseeing, you deserve some relaxation. Be sure to take in the stunning coastal sights and enjoy every moment. To enhance your Santa Cruz County experience, download the free Mobile Ranger app so you can be your own tour guide. For more information, cruise on over to visitssantacruz.org, and don't forget to follow Visit Santa Cruz County on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. When you're in town, stop into the Year Round Visitor Center at 303 Water Street.[1111.13][1111.13](APPLAUSE).
How cool was that? We learned about Davenport at the city Capitola meeting. So city of Capitola officials, the Capitola Historical Museum, and, anyway, city of Capitola officials, the local businesses who partner with us in Capitola, and the Capitola Historical Museum, we're all instrumental in helping put this video together. So thank you for helping us tell your story. And you can watch the video again and again and again on our YouTube channel at visitssantacruz.org. So thank you.
Or you can get the app.
Or you can get the app on Mobile Ranger.
Well done. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Questions?
You know, we had a lot of people from other countries here this summer. I noticed more than other summers. I volunteer at the Capitola Museum, and lots and lots of people from other countries speaking lots of different languages. It was the most international summer I've noticed so far. It was wonderful. We had bigger crowds come in and more diverse, and it was very exciting.
That's great. Yeah, words getting out in those flights into San Jose Airport will certainly help that effort.
Well, there's a piece of my heart in San Jose Airport, too, I think. There used to be one.
Oh, piece of my heart.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.[1191.76][1191.76](LAUGHING). They should put a sign up to visit Capitola.
Oh, there you go. I wanted to also take the opportunity to thank city manager Jamie Goldstein for his service on the board with Visit Santa Cruz County. We're really enjoying having his input and his expertise, and thank you for supporting him in that.
Great. Thank you. Okay, brings us to a report on closed session.
Legal counsel met with city council on closed session items. We discussed the existing litigation matter, Water Rock Construction versus City Capitola, as well as the liability claim filed by Roderick O'Neill-Witley, which is also listed on tonight's consent calendar, and there is no reportable action.
Okay. Sue, any additional materials received?
No, no additional materials. Thank you.
Okay, great. Mr. City Manager, additions and deletions to the agenda? Staff has no changes. Okay. That'll bring us to the public comment period. This is the time when the public can come and address the city council for up to three minutes on any item that is not on the agenda. If your item that you're here for is on the agenda, we'll wait for that hearing. But if you have something in general you'd like to speak of, come up now and tell us your name. Anybody who'd like to take advantage of that?
Bruce Tanner from Santa Cruz. I have some envelopes here for the city council and for Jimmy Goldstein. To the Capitola city council and staff, enclosed with this cover letter is a copy of Josh Del Sol of TakeBackYourPower.net's recent video on the chair of the FCC, Tom Wheeler's recent one-hour press conference announcing what he called "the urgent priority for the United States to roll out the fifth-generation mobile network," also known as 5G technology ASAP, starting in 2017. Wheeler says this is essential if America is to retain tech preeminence and facilitate the advancement of commercial systems for business and communications. In the video on the enclosed DVD, you will see Wheeler refuse to even take a question from a reporter regarding the now thousands of scientific studies that show the serious harms to health that microwave frequencies and the waveforms carried on them are demonstrated to cause. 5G mobile frequencies are slated to go as high as 90 gigahertz. At that frequency, the wavelength of the signal is a mere 3.33 millimeters in length, roughly the thickness of human skin. This is a completely unprecedented biological exposure for both human and animal life, as well as the living systems of Earth. No one knows what the potential effects of these waves will be, particularly as the possible broadcast waveforms at this speed can be so incredibly complex. The US is far behind most of the developed world as far as our access to high-quality broadband internet service. What the FCC and by extension, powerful technology companies seem to be proposing here is to close that gap by, rather than creating a robust fiber optic capacity, to instead bathe the entire country in powerful, super-high-frequency microwaves. There is no dedicated testing currently underway to find out what the consequences of this proposed massive exposure could be. The industry says that the many, they say, benefits of 5G will include the streaming of high-definition video on demand to mobile devices. Look around you at the proliferation of the use of these devices, particularly by our children and youth. Is supporting the increase in people's absorption into this technological paradigm something that is worthy of prioritizing over the rest of the population's innate, natural right to live healthy lives? What is really going on here? Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Bruce.
As listening to the presentations just now, the one about this being Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, why are there so many cases of cancer that it didn't used to be? What is the relationship to the exposure to all this radiation, both from Fukushima and wireless technology? The World Health Organization labels this wireless microwave radiation as a possible carcinogen in the same category as lead, DDT, benzene. So why are children being forced to be exposed in schools and from all these devices, including this presentation we just saw, to this, what I think is a known carcinogen, according to Barry Trower? I think of Sandra Stein-Graeber often. Dr. Sandra Stein-Graeber wrote the book, "Living Downstream: An Ecologist Looks at Cancer in the Environment." And she states, "It's intolerable to be regulating, monitoring, permitting known and suspected carcinogens into the environment, rather than prohibiting their generation in the first place. Whether it's pesticides or radiation, it should be prohibited." And she states further that this is a form of homicide. We know people will die. We may not know how many. Now, I, you know, when I started teaching in 1965, cancer in children was rare. Autism was unheard of. So what we need to be doing, and Jacob's Heart, of course, helps children who have cancer, needs to be prohibited, the cancer causers, in the first place. And to not do that, when you know the harmful effects, is permitting and perpetuating this kind of corporate harm. Where's the ethics in this? To me, it's criminal behavior to harm children, to harm the environment, and to harm wildlife. And when Verizon sues the city of Capitola, and they're suing the city of Watsonville now for refusal of cancer-causing, radiation-emitting wireless sites, we don't have our health. If we don't have the right to a healthy environment, and we don't have elected representatives who are standing up for us and our right to health, we have no democracy. We have a corporatocracy, and this is a huge problem and a huge violation of any of our rights. And you tell us to go to the federal government. Cities and elected representatives of counties need to be advocating for us and joining together to stop this kind of assault. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ellen. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Speaking about the same issue, the radiation, I've been doing a lot of research on this lately, and specifically, I asked the representative from Verizon last, two weeks ago, August 4th, how many microwatts per square centimeter are these antennas capable of permitting? And he couldn't answer my question, a very simple, technical question for his product that he's basically selling and pushing through the permitting process. And so why is that simple question not answerable by him? And the truth is that in the US, the limits on microwatts per square centimeter are 500 to 1,000. And this limit was established in 1996, before the proliferation of cell phones. Other countries that are taking a more conservative wait-and-see approach about this technology, as it has been shown in studies to cause cancer, are taking a more conservative approach and setting their limits at 10. So we're their limits at 10. So we're talking about 10 to 500 to 1,000. It's a major difference in limits. And the government has allowed these limits because of the lobbyists in Congress that pushed these limits through. There was recently a $25 million study done here in the United States on rats, and they have shown a correlation between brain cancer and these radiation from cellphone towers.
Thank you.
We now have two of them that are now being built right in the area that we live in, and one of them is on 41st Avenue, and the other one is over on the AAA building. Both of us live right next door to the AAA building on the back alley, which is about a half of a block away from where they're being built. We have no clue on what the emissions are from them, or how much we would have to suffer from it. We've passed out flyers, because nobody gave anybody in that area any information that they were going to be coming up. And then the owner of the building, I called him, and he said, "Maybe in three months, maybe more," but he couldn't give me any kind of a date of when they were going to be coming up. And that was the one, the AAA building that we live near. And all, we've passed out flyers all over the neighborhood, in all the areas near where we're living, and nobody was aware of it. Everybody is, "Oh, they are totally on our side." They say, "We would, we know, we have a real concern about it, but we, we feel very helpless about what we can do to be able to, to get that under control." And so we're, we're really trying to get it together where people will have awareness of the fact that if you live in residential areas next to these towers that are coming up, even the small ones, we don't have any clue on what the emissions are coming out of them and how far away they are. How many, how many people would be affected by it with children, and lots of children live in that area? There's an elementary school over there. And whether there is any reason or any information that says, would we not have bad effects from it, especially our children and pregnant women? And we really are in a, in a very big turmoil, because they sued the one, they sued, Verizon sued the one that they were trying to take, say, "No, we're not going to do that with," they, they said, "We won't, we won't let that happen," but they, Verizon sued it, and so they went and approved both of them without our even knowing it. We didn't have a chance to even know it. So I go in by all of my neighbors over there, and they're saying, "We don't even, we never even knew this was happening." They, they went and approved it without us even knowing. So is that, is that a democracy? Is that a place where people live that pay property taxes? That pay their, their money to live in places, that don't know what's going on, aren't told about it? And the only way they know about it is because somebody like, like my friend and I go around with flyers and tell them? We live there. This is, these are our homes. Would you like to live there?
Can I just say something? We, we do have public notices for all of our applications before the Planning Commission and City Councils, so neighbors are notified within a certain area. I don't feel that that's always enough, but that's, that's, we, we cover what we're supposed to cover legally, and so the immediate neighbors are always notified.
We got a postcard, but it did not explain anything on it.
You have to come down here and, and look it up.
Or look it up online. Well, most of the neighbors didn't know that this was happening. Most of the neighbors, there was nothing on that specifically said anything that made it look like something that was of importance to us.
Yeah, but this isn't a comment period where we answer back and forth. What I will tell you is that whenever there is anything being proposed in the city limits, we send out notifications, and I, what's the distance?
I believe it's 500 feet?
300 to 500 feet. It depends on the issue. And we, and if you're in that range, you will receive a notice that there is a public hearing going on, and you're allowed to come and find out information. And prior to that public hearing, you can come to the city counter, and all the information is available there at the counter. Well, like I said, the information is there for you to come and preview, okay? It's not mailed to your house. The postcard just tells you there will be a public hearing, it will be discussed, and to let you aware of it. But we only do it legally within 500 feet of where it's going to be located. Okay?
Well, I, I, I don't know. I, I've never gone through this before, but I know that wherever I am right now is about a half a block away.
Right. Well, you should have received the card saying that there was...
We did receive a card, but we did not know what the card was really all about, and a lot of us didn't come because of that. We didn't, it was very blasé about what was going on. And we didn't, I didn't come, and all the other people that were living in my area, that where I came, where I live, which is right off of the, the, right off of the AAA building, which is where they're...
I, I guess what I'm trying to explain is that when we do send out the cards, the cards will say, "We're having a public hearing," which is what this is. Not, not necessarily tonight, but we have items on a public hearing. That is, we don't make any decisions. We notify the people that there's going to be a public hearing, and then you're allowed to come and weigh in on that public hearing.
When did they decide they were going to sign it?
We, we, everything we did, we did as we were supposed to do, so we're not going to carry this on. I just want to let you know what the process is.
All right, but I know right now that it's been signed, and it's going to come up. Those towers are coming up in both of those areas, even though one was denied. But because of our Verizon sued...
We know that, and, and ma'am, you had, you had your three minutes to talk about that, and that's what you're allowed to do. So that's the end of your...
That's what I'm here doing.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the council on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period. We'll move to City Council comments. Dennis?
This next weekend is the Begonia Festival over Labor Day weekend, and it goes Saturday, Sunday, and there's a parade on Sunday, and then Monday, there's a number of events in the city, and it's really kind of a locals event, although we certainly get 15,000 to 20,000 people here in this little town here. And in, in the presentation tonight by the, by the Visitors Bureau, they, four times I counted that they showed the Stockton Street Bridge. And, and in personal observation, it's time to start taking care of that bridge. And what's happening, it's either a black mold or a, or some sort of, it could be from exhaust type of thing. It's actually darkening the color of it. It almost looks like it's decaying. I would suggest that, that we have City Public Works look into doing a washing of that bridge in some way, a water blast or whatever it takes to clean it up. It's a beautiful white bridge, and it needs to come back to it. And hopefully, we can possibly do it before next weekend. Thank you.
Duly noted.
Duly noted. We have formed a brand-new Friends of the Capitola Library group, and we're very excited about it. And so if any of you are interested in helping us plan for our new library, it's wide open. And we have some tentative drawings in the library and upstairs, but your ideas are most welcome. And our Friends group is going to take a tour of the Scotts Valley Library and Los Gatos Library and a couple libraries over in San Jose. And so if you want to join the group, or come to part of it, or you have any ideas, please join our group, and we're going to be meeting again on, every couple months. The next meeting's going to be September 17th at the library at 10 o'clock in the morning, I think.
Councilmember Chairman?
Yes, the, the tour of libraries on the 7th of September in two weeks, and we have room for, we have a few extra seats in the city, two city vans going over. Anyone is welcome. This Friday, Movies on the Beach starts, and it is the movie Grease. Come on down to sing along. Begonia Festival is a week from this weekend, so a week from this Friday, it starts. And a question for the chief, since he's sitting there right in front of a microphone. I had a couple residents on Depot Hill be concerned about potential campers in the underbrush at the top of the steps. Maybe we could, you know, do some patrolling and see what's going on.
And this would be a great opportunity to trim all those bushes up there for better visibility for everything, people, animals. There was a snake, did you get a report of a, of a big snake up there the other day?
I did not.
A scared lady who fell down 10, 10 feet, 10 steps, and didn't hurt herself badly, and she went down and called the police to report it. But she said it was not a garden snake. It was a big snake that jumped up at the top of the stairs. So we really need, we really need to clean that, we really need to cut those bushes down.
The jumping snakes of Capitola notwithstanding, I know that, I know that there's a concern by Public Works that a lot of the underbrush is on private property, and, and we're always reluctant to go on to someone else's property, so perhaps we can contact neighbors and let them know that their, their underbrush is growing beyond underbrush.
And, and let's do it, so we don't keep talking about it.
We just, we just can't walk into somebody's backyard and...
Right.
I've noticed that area, and I think it is on private property. Maybe we can...
Take a look at what the options are.
Look into, yeah, the options. And I don't know about the snake, but could be a story. Treasurer, Sue, you have comments?
Yes. I just wanted to let everyone know that there is an opening on the Commission on Environment for a student member, and also we're recruiting for an alternate representative on the advisory council to the area agency on aging of Santa Cruz and San Benito Counties. If anyone's interested, contact the city clerk's office. Thank you.
Treasurer, any comments?
No comment.
No comments.
Staff?
I think we're going to get an update from our Public Works Director on our paving project. That's going to be taking place here in the next couple months.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We had a pre-construction meeting two days ago with Granite Rock Construction, who will be doing the paving job. They are about a, four weeks out. They need to do some testing on the asphalt, because what we're doing is grinding it up and creating a new emulsion and putting it back down, so they need to determine what kind of admixtures they need to put in there, so they're going to be starting that. So sometime in late September, we should be starting on that project. It should go pretty quickly once they get started.
This is Park Avenue or speaking?
Yes, Park Avenue, Kennedy, and Monterey. That's it? That's all we got?
So Park and Monterey, is Claire's part of that group also?
No, Claire's is another project we're working on the design right now, and we're looking at going from 46th up toward 41st, and we'll leave the other part vacant now until the county does their sanitation.
Is that still scheduled to be done in '16?
No, that'll be in '17.
In '17, okay. Okay, any questions?
Brisbane?
Brisbane, the trail project, it's kind of halted right here. The contractor had to go finish some school projects. It'll be coming back on. Handrail should be up on the lower portion within, I think sometime next week, and then we'll go to work on the upper portion through the garden. And then on the park, we'll go out to bid as soon as I see the end of that project in, in coming up, so we're, we're rolling forward.
Is the loop that goes in front of the wristband, is that part of the park project, Steve, or is that part of this project?
The loop behind the wall.
It goes in front of the wristband mansion?
Down at, down at the lower level?
Yeah.
That's part of the second project?
Second project, yes. Thank you.
Are you going to advertise memorial benches for people? Because I'm sure they would love to have, people would love to have a...
We're, we're actually reviewing our policy now, because we have several benches up at our new park on McGregor. So Larry's, I think, going to be bringing forward a discussion of our memorial program, and we'll talk about it then.
That'd be, it would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other staff comments? Okay, brings us to a Boards, Commissions, and Appointments, and I believe the only one we have scheduled, this is a consideration of an appointment to the Cities Traffic and Parking Commission. This is an appointment that I had for a commissioner that moved out of the city, and we had a vacancy. I received two applications for that position and interviewed both applicants, and both were extremely qualified to fill in that position, but I felt one of the people that I interviewed might be better on some other committee down the road, so the, my appointment to that committee will be Doug Thon. Sue, do you have that application from Doug Thon? And you can forward to him whatever information he needs for that next, to attend that next meeting. That brings us to our consent calendar. These are items that normally are of routine in nature, and we approve them usually all as one vote. Is there any council member that would like to pull anything on the consent agenda?
I will move the consent agenda.
Second?
Is there any?
I would like to pull item A, please.
Item A?
Yes, please.
Okay. Let me see, is there anyone from the public that would like to pull any item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to A. You have a question about A, or an item you'd like to discuss?
No, I just, I liked it that item to be discussed by Jamie. Can you, can you do it?
Are we talking about, I'm sorry, the minutes?
You're talking about, oh, I'm sorry. I have a question on the check register. Wasn't A, that's...
That's C, C. Oh, that's C we're going to pull.
Okay. Are you ready for me? Are you ready for me?
Yeah, no, that's the only item we have, is what you'd like to review.
The McGregor Park soils analysis, Steve?
Which check register was that?
That's, that's item number 84295.
Do you know the date?
August 25th.
And who's the tip? I'm sorry, I don't...
Yeah, McGregor. It's, it's McGregor. It's for Weber Hayes and Associates for $10,000.
Yeah, so they, they are writing our remedial action plan for soils. Even though we, we have the plan proposed, they need to monitor our construction site and then file a final plan still, once we're done with that, once all the construction's done and everything's in place. So that's probably for writing the last part of our report and doing the monitoring during the construction.
So have, have we, have we completed all the remediation on, on all three of the projects we had there?
We've completed remediation. We still need to file a, a final report with the county on that, but we've completed all the remediation work, yes.
And so that's, that's, is that, are we going to receive another bill from them?
Yeah, we'll have another invoice for the final work.
What was the total cost for remediation on this project?
Several hundred thousand dollars.
Really?
Yeah.
And that's, and that's, that's...
That's the county's costs, the cost for Weber Hayes, and the cost for work that Earthworks did on the project.
Okay, thank you.
Question about the same thing. Did the Water District find any of the same issues on their part of the property that we sold them when they put in the water monitoring station?
No, they had, they had done some sampling, and that, the portion they bought didn't have any of these issues, because that was, there was no fill brought in where they are.
Somebody asked me about that. They said, "How come all that was over on our side?" And, and was it just a lucky coincidence that it wasn't, wasn't, because they didn't have to do any of this stuff?
Yeah, no, it was mainly because of the fill, and that whole, where the park is today, was all brought on fill, maybe 50 years ago, but it was still brought in in fill, and that's what raised the, the level beyond what the native is there. It's still an acceptable level in other places, but the background in that area was, was very low.
Thank you for that report. Hold on, Steve.
No, you're okay, Steve. I'm okay. Go ahead. I just want to bring up that, on the check register, on item 84159, the nine, the Santa Cruz Regional 911 billing, I will not be voting.
I'm going to vote separately on that. We're going to, we have a motion and a second on A, B, D, and E. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Those carry unanimously, and...
I'll move the check register.
Second?
Except for, except for the 911 item.
Okay, and I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
I'll move the 911 item number, Weber was. For approval?
89157.
Yes.
And there was a motion, and you seconded it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Aye.
You don't want to vote against it?
No.
No, you said no, you said no. That was a no on just...
All those opposed, aye. Aye, aye opposed.
Right, you opposed. You got it. I just want to make sure Sue has...
So Norton was the only one that opposed?
On, on just that one check.
Okay, for the 911. Thank you.
Okay. Takes us to the general government hearing, and the first one we are going to do tonight is a Considerate Authorization City Council response to the 2015-16 Santa Cruz Grand Jury Report titled, "Capitola Police Department Citizens Complaint Procedure: Nothing to Complain About." Chief Escalante, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present on the response from the grand jury. For those in the audience and listening at home who don't know, in 2015, the Santa Cruz County Civil Grand Jury contacted the police department and indicated that they were going to conduct an investigation on how we handle citizen complaints. And this was an internal review where the grand jury called me for an interview. It took a little over two hours, and they reviewed complaints. They randomly selected complaints that we had done internally. So everybody knows there are two different types of complaints. There's an Internal Affairs investigation, and that's more of a formal complaint where somebody can complain against an officer for their conduct or their performance, and if we find a violation of law or policy, we can take action on that. And then we also have inquiries where oftentimes, somebody might have a question about... have inquiries, where oftentimes, somebody might have a question about a procedure or policy, and we can usually handle those either by phone or in person. And so we are governed by the California Penal Code and the government code in how we handle complaints and how we investigate them. The good news is, the grand jury, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, that they said there's nothing to complain about. In fact, the comment from the grand jury, it took about six, seven months to complete, stated that with just some minor adjustments, we would be a model agency for all of Santa Cruz County law enforcement. And that is something that we have worked hard for internally, and we follow the law. I'll go over the recommendations as to what they mentioned, but overall, the department came out very favorably. They had a couple of recommendations, I'll go into those, and we agreed with all of them, and actually already implemented those recommendations. By law, the requirement is that the council does have to submit their findings and how they respond to them, and I'll show you what that response is. So what I did in preparation for the interview was I went back and looked at six years of data in regards to our complaints. You can see that during that six years, we had 20 Internal Affairs complaints, those are noted right here, and then we had 35 inquiries. As I mentioned earlier, what the difference between an Internal Affairs complaint and an inquiry, you can see that 60% of those were generated internally. That's usually where a supervisor observes some sort of performance issue or conduct, or it becomes aware, and then they are responsible for initiating that and bringing that through the chain of command. And through our policy, it is the responsibility of the Office of the Chief to initiate that investigation. As you go down, you can see that of the 20 Internal Affairs complaints, 19 or 95% of those were sustained, only one of them was exonerated. In regards to the inquiries, 13% were sustained, while 87% were unfounded. If you look at the calls for service data relative to the complaints, in the six-year time period, we had 107,000 calls for service, and when you measure that against 20 Internal Affairs complaints, I feel like we're doing a pretty good job. I tried to kind of measure it in regards to the IAs and to the inquiries, and you can see that one in every 7,000 calls for service will result in some sort of inquiry. And so I feel like we're doing really well. The grand jury, when I presented this information, they asked me if I published this data, and I said, well, no, I presented it for you, and so that was one of the recommended findings is that we should post this, and we've already done that, and that is on our city's website. I made an asterisk there, just to note that we, as a department, all of our uniformed personnel wore body cameras, and we are the only agency in the county that does that. So there were eight findings. One of them was that we could reduce the time needed to complete investigations. Sometimes we have to toll an investigation depending if a particular matter or personnel person is not available. I am restricted by law as to what I can reveal, what I can talk about in regards to personnel matters, but what we try and do is reach out to the complainant numerous times to try and resolve the issue, or at least make contact with them. The findings were that we have a 12-month time period by law to complete an investigation, and we met that timeline in every case. As they mentioned, they felt that the citizens of Capitola would benefit by having the statistics made available to the public, and we've already done that. They did find that we do document cases regarding the complaints, that they are documented in reasonable timeframe, and that they are complete, that we have policies by state law that govern employee complaints and personnel matters, and that is consistent with state law. They did also find that it conducts its complaint program consistently with our policy, and that the officers are treated with fairness and with integrity. So they evaluated whatever discipline matters might have occurred from a complaint, and to see that that was fair and consistent. We do have our information, once we complete a complaint, we inform the person, who was the complainant, that we have completed it and what the resolution was. They're not entitled to, if discipline was issued, how much discipline, but we do let them know the status of the complaint. And they also found that we are conducting our duties in a professional manner, and so that was very nice to get that encouragement from them. At the completion of their investigation, they came down to the office and actually went over the entire report with us, and so it was a good interaction, and I think we did very well. In regards to the recommendations, as I mentioned earlier, there were two of them. One of them was to complete the investigations in a 12-month time period, and we agreed with that. We understand the need for balancing the needs of our community for the protection of our service, and in the italicized section there, that is the response that we have sent to the grand jury. And as I mentioned earlier, that is a requirement by law that the council has to respond to that. The other recommendation was that the department should consider placing the statistics on closure and complaints online. As I mentioned, we've already done that, and that is available online. Lastly, I do want to remind everybody of the commendation that they did give us, and that we, how we handled the process, and that it was effective and fair, and that the minor recommendations that they had felt that we would be a model agency for the county to follow. So moving forward, something that we as a city and as a police department, as you know, the Finance Department has an interactive process for people to look at the budget. Well, we've also implemented that with our use of force. For those who don't remember, AB 71 was passed and effective January 1 of 2017, where law enforcement agencies are going to be required and mandated to report to the Department of Justice use of force statistics in regards to great bodily injury or death. Well, we've taken it a little bit of a step further. We reached out to an independent outside consultant, Sanford Olson and Scales, and asked them to do a review of our use of force incidents. We wanted to look at their training issues, is our policy consistent, is it being followed when use of forces cases are being investigated, how do we compare in regards to our calls for service? We feel that that is an important responsibility as law enforcement professionals to make sure that we are looking at these cases very much in depth. So we looked at a five-year period and analyzed all of those use of force cases. The company is out of Seattle, and so, and they have extensive experience. They were actually, some of the members of the partnership were involved in fixing the Seattle Police Department when it was having problems years ago. And we had 32 uses of force cases over that five-year time period, and in comparison, we had 88,000 calls for service. We had, as you know, we also have what they call force events and force incidents. So there could be one incident and have multiple events in one incident. For example, I could, you know, ask somebody to put their hands behind their back, they don't. I use a wrist twist lock, and if for some reason that escalates based on the suspect's actions, I may have to use multiple events in one incident. And so we had a total of 56 force events during those 32 incidents, and that was conducted by 15 different officers. Again, it's dependent on the suspect's actions, and so how the officer can respond so they can overcome that resistance. So this is kind of what the cover sheet looks like, and I'm going to jump into this, and hopefully we'll get everything going. But on the city's website, you can see, this is our use of force statistics area. In our records division, this is where our inquiries are located, so people from the public can go ahead and look at that. There's a link here to the dashboard that would bring up all of the information in regards to the use of force data. It takes about 10 or 15 seconds to go, to load up, and then it'll all come up in regards to date, time, location, suspect information, and it's something that is very interactive. So if you look at the top here, the date, time and location, once you click on that tab, it covers all of our use of force information. It breaks it down by, actually seasonal, the green area right here, it'll tell you how many cases we had during winter, spring, summer or fall. It tells you how many we've had by year. It goes by whether the original call was a violent crime or a property crime. You can see in the right-hand corner how many incidents we've had and the force events. It actually plots where the ones occur. The ones that are outside the city limits, those were assists for an outside agency. You can see that Friday, Saturday and Sunday are the days of peak, where we've had the most use of force. Breaks it down by even time, 6:00 PM till midnight, 69%. If you take your mouse and you hover over a specific area, it'll break it down for you. You can see whether it was dispatched, whether the incident was reported by somebody else, or whether it was on viewed by the officer, and the type of locations. So it is very interactive for the public to use. If I go over to suspect information, it will actually break all the information down from those cases based on gender, race, age, was the resident, or the person involved a resident of the community, did they come from outside the community, what the mental state was of the person that was involved in the use of force case, and actually by suspect height and weight. It also talks about the suspect's activities and the resistance, and whether there was flight involved. And you can see in the bottom corner, there's actually a box that a community member can click on, and it'll break it down, was it by foot or vehicle or foot. And then it also gets into the force tactics, just the last tab. Again, it just takes a few seconds for it to load, and it talks about the force factor, the physical tactics that might have been used, the maximum force factor, whether the type of resistance, whether there was any type of conversation before the actual use of force. And in this instance, you can see that approximately 66% of the cases involving the use of force, there was some sort of conversation that was occurring before it actually happened. So we think this is a really good tool moving forward. This is something that we use from a training perspective. It's something that we look to make sure that we are applying our policy correctly. We look at it from several different angles, and having an outside consultant conduct this for us has just been something very valuable for us moving forward. And so with that, I'm ready for any questions, if you want to ask me more about the grand jury report. But again, I'm very proud of the performance by the officers, and the response from the grand jury was very favorable for us, so.
Before I open it to the public, is there any questions on the report? Questions? Is there anyone from the public that would like to come up and make a comment on this grand jury report? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, maybe, maybe before you guys start, I really do want to commend Chief Escalante for his work on this. I think that the grand jury's report is a real testament to the efforts that he's put in, and the tire management of the police department has put in to really focus the department and keep it on track. In addition, I think that this use of force analysis is something Rudy and I talked a lot about, and it's, from a management standpoint, it's an incredibly valuable tool. And frankly, I don't think there are very many forces of our scale around the country that have access to this type of data, and it really points out, the information was generally, was all good, but it also points to really key management decisions and training opportunities, as Rudy said, shows times of day when force is used, which officers are involved, the force differential in terms of the suspect and the officer, a lot of good things to look at. So it's really cutting-edge stuff, and I'm really, really want to commend Chief Escalante for getting that and then helping put it up on the internet so it's available for the public to see.
We're proud of our police department here in Capitola.
Thank you.
Yeah, and you're a leader. And in transition, with you moving out and a new chief moving in, we will expect the same quality as a leader in that department, and you're passing on a system that's in good hands.
Thank you.
It'll be easy to manage, or easier to manage since you have it in place, and thank you for that.
You're welcome.
My pleasure.
This might be a great story for John D. and the Sentinel.
Well, I wanted to roll it out to council and the public first, and I have talked to them, and it's something that will come out. Comments?
I will move the staff recommendation and the responses, if there's a second.
Second, and congratulations.
Thank you.
And you, you bring, you know, the term social justice is bandied about in many instances, and you epitomize it, and I thank you. I've done enough ride-alongs with the police, with various police officers, and I marvel at their poise in situations that I don't know if I could handle.
Thank you.
Well done, and with regard to the website, we still do not have Open Gov as a button on the homepage. That's just aside.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So smaller, smaller.
I just have one final comment, and that is, you know, running in the department, police department is a very difficult task, and we're fortunate that we have no negative feedback coming to us, because the responsibility of that department, if it was negative, would fall on your shoulders. So I think this is a great opportunity to commend you for an outstanding report that shows you're doing a fabulous job there, and that someone who walks in and attempts to fill your shoes is not going to have a situation that they're going to have to turn around, remodel, rebuild, that they're going to be able to take what's here, obviously bring their own improvements, but it's very stable and workable, and I'm amazed by the numbers, how it runs. And my interaction with the police officer on the street is, they are personable people, and they're here to serve the residents of Capitola, so all I can say is job well done. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Okay, Larry, come on up. That takes us to our next item, which is a, oh, I'm sorry, we have to vote on this. There was a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, obviously nobody. Thank you very much, Chief. And with that, we'll have, consider applications for community grants and recommendations of the Community Grants Ad Hoc Subcommittee.
Okay.
Barry.
Good evening, Council. Mr. Mayor. So we're here to talk about the Community Grants Program and the allocation of the Community Grants Funds for 2016, 2017. Just want to do a quick reminder of where we're at. The city of Capitola participates in a county-wide common application, which allows agencies to apply for grant funding from all the cities, as well as the county and the United Way, one place. In 2014, the city implemented a two-year grant cycle, and it was recommended that that continue. The city budgeted $275,000 for this program in 2016 and kept it the same in 2017, 2018. On June 1st, the council appointed Mayor Botorff and Vice Mayor Harland to review the grant requests and give recommendations to the full council. This year, the city received requests from 31 community groups and 42 separate programs. The total base request of, was a little over $274,000. In addition to that, there were cost of living adjustments that some grantees requested of $3,652, and some additional or one-time requests of $3,157. So what that meant was the total requested for 1617 was $208,907. So the group met, and based on a couple meetings and reviewing of the applications, the recommendations were the following. There were three groups that the group recommended reducing the base amount. One was Campus Kids Connection from $17,331 to $15,331, the Parent Center of Santa Cruz from $7,373 to $6,073, and the Senior Citizens Legal Services from $10,163 to $8,663. That was a total reduction of $4,500, which brought the total amount to $269,598. The recommendation was also a 2% adjustment for all grant requesters for fiscal year 2016-17, which is above the base request. That totaled to be $5,392. So when we add those two together, the total recommended allocation for this program, the grant program, is $274,900. It was also recommended that these levels were maintained for 2017, 2018. So now I'm ready to take any questions.
Any questions?
Was, what was the reason that the three groups were reduced? Maybe the committee can...
Well, I can answer that if you want to. You know, this was really not a very good process, I don't think, this year, to put someone like Ed and I on the committee that thinks so differently to try to come together for a compromise was not a real good idea. So I wouldn't suggest that the council do that next year. I think... I think Subcommittee ideas, perhaps a good idea, but I mean, this needs to be discussed by, I think, all the council members. So I think we came up with a terrible recommendation, and I'm sorry. It wasn't very scientific, and it should be scientific if we're going to do that. So I would like to go back to square one and talk about not cutting any of the programs and having everybody get the same amount that they got last year plus a COLA. And I would like the council to try to squeeze some money out of some other funds and areas and to come up with a few thousand dollars to make that happen. And I'm sorry to put a lot of anxiety in all of you when you saw that recommendation, because that's, I really regret that, you know, I kind of went along with it and decided on that at the time.
We can talk about that, we have discussion.
I just wanted to put that out there.
I just want to have questions right now if we can. You had a question?
So the recommended reduction was $4,500? That's all we, that's it?
But not basically, yeah.
Well, let's go back, because I think the facts that Larry brought up, just so we know, this started, I'm going to say whenever that, you can correct me the date, but Councilman Termini and myself met back.
I believe it was prior to the 2014-2015.
Right. And at that point, we established, because we do this every two years, that the budget that we would allocate for this fund would be $275,000 for each year. Okay, so that was established. So then we met, then we came into the new process where we said, let's take a look at all the lists and see if there's anybody that we, you know, want to reduce, we want to increase, whatever. We just took all the requests that were made, and at the meeting, and I say, this is news to me, because at the meeting, when I left out, when I walked out of the room, we had an agreement about what we were going to do, and that included three agencies that were going to receive a reduction, but in addition, everyone across the board was going to receive a 2% raise, and that's what I thought we were approving tonight, up until just hearing this two minutes ago. So I'm at a loss for where we are, because the process, as we agreed to the $275, $275, Councilman Termini and myself, and then we, Councilman Harland, Councilmember Harmon and I had the meeting. So we're going to have to decide what we're going to do tonight, but that's where we're at.
But it makes it difficult when you set an amount, and then you look at the programs, because what if you say, well, I want to give that program a little more, because they're really doing a good job, and they really have a big need.
We can, we're not discussing it right now. I want to open it up to the public. I just wanted to explain to Dennis what transpired, because you weren't in the room. There were two meetings. One to establish the dollar amount, the next meeting was to establish the allocations, and that's what got us here tonight.
The only other point I would add to that is the amount was set in the budget. So the $275 was adopted by the full council, although I do think at that time there was discussion by some council members that they did want to look at it later. It wasn't just set in committee, it was as part of the full budget.
So tonight, what we'll do is, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, you have a question or?
I have a math question.
Sure.
My spreadsheet genius city manager. I'm looking at 1516 funding of 277, 316. I'm looking at 1617 request of 274, 098, correct?
That's correct.
But in those two columns, I have one organization that increased its request by $5,000. How could it be less?
There was at least one organization that did not reapply.
I don't see that as a blank in the column anywhere. I'm seeing one column that says 1516 funding, and the sum of that column, 277, and I have the 1617 request base, 274, in spite of someone increasing their request by $5,000.
I'm sorry, I don't know where the, we were, this was the numbers that came from the system as far as what was requested this year. There may be some additional change, there might be some changes back from, which one, this is 2016-17, this one you're looking at, or 2015?
Well, look at 1516 and go down to the bottom. Look at the cell at the bottom.
Yes.
Would you highlight that cell, and let me see what it's doing? It's, is it what I think it is, Jamie, which is a sum of the column? I don't see a dialogue box.
It should, no, there's, let me.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying.
And what that, the question that begs for me is, if we merely don't honor that increased request, we've covered the COLA, and we're at our budget amount.
Right, so I mean.
Without reducing anyone.
So that is, the Subcommittee had, you know, I'll let the Subcommittee members speak for themselves, but you're right. The actual request that came in the door was 274 as the base request, and that was within the budget amount. It was only when you got into the, either COLAs or the extra add-ons that we got over 274.
Well, again, if the 274 is the request, when the group's is a total.
That is the request.
And that includes the $5,000 increase to senior council, then if we take that.
No, what, the senior?
Does that, or does that not include?
The previous year, it does have the $5,000. The $5,000 is actually, that was in the previous one. They came late to the, I think, the second year, the senior council, I'm sorry, the companion for life lifeline, is that, is that the one? And they, we did fund them last, the last cycle.
The increase I'm looking at is the seniors' council of Santa Cruz and San Benito County.
Yes, that's correct.
They're showing 1516 funding of 3370. They're requesting 8370 this year.
No, so, see the highlighted, see the darkened, those two below it are part of that. So there's, they have two programs within the agency.
And that's something that's not on the spreadsheet in our report.
No, it's, so these two that I'm highlighting right there.
Correct.
So this, that previous one, they actually did request it, but it wasn't an initial request for the first year. They added later on. It was approved after the initial request, so I didn't realize that wasn't part, so there should be another $5,000.
Okay, I'll accept that. So now let's go to the column that's 1617, base recommendation.
Yes.
We brought, we've eliminated that senior, extra senior council $5,000.
It's there, it's there. It's highlighted. I'm sorry, let me highlight it.
Doesn't look like it.
So are you saying that Project Scout and Companion Life Lifeline is the same, is part of the 8370?
That's correct. They're both, yes, so that, I tried to, that's, yeah, those are both part of the seniors' council.
So doesn't make this spreadsheet easy to comprehend.
Yeah, I understand.
The illusion is it's 269, and it actually is not 269.
Right, so, Councilmember Termini, I think, I think actually what the confusing part there is that the typo is actually in the, it's a subtotal up above for the seniors' council, and they should be reading 8, 3, 7, 0 across the board.
Yes, that's.
And that would, I think that would clear up your confusion, because that's actually a subtotal for the other projects.
You mentioned someone requested an increase this year. Who was it who requested the increase? Because I can't see anything down this column.
It was on the previous, so.
There were, there were three that recommended an increase.
Who asked for more money than they had last year?
Cabrillo Stroke and Disability.
Hang on.
So you'll see, that's.
I'm seeing $7,027 across.
Right.
None of those were acknowledged.
It's not showing in their spreadsheet.
It's not showing up?
Their spreadsheet doesn't have it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Councilmember Termini? I must not have.
Well, you can see where I'm not, I'm not seeing.
No, you, so I was looking at the other part of the spreadsheet.
That's actually 274 is what that should be. So we are at.
So I apologize.
Let's kind of zero in on who was asking for more money.
We should have used this old spreadsheet, that's easier to read.
Yeah, well, I think on the, what I did is I, when I printed that out, I did not include this piece on the screen now, which is the actual, from the system itself, and the additional request out for the one-time, is that what we're talking about? Or the COLA?
The one-time?
The one-time, it was Cabrillo Stroke and Disability Learning Center, that was additional request, Central Coast for Independent Living, which is a one-time request, seniors' council of Santa Cruz County and San Benito of 2,500, which was Project Scout. They requested an additional 2,500 for Project Scout.
And the total of those three was 3,150, okay? But there wasn't enough funds to.
I'll question Councilmember Harland after the public comment.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought that this piece got included with your spreadsheet. I apologize.
All right. Any other questions before I open it up? Okay, we're going to bring this back and discuss it, but now is the time for the public to come in and make their comments, so please come forward and tell us what agency you're with.
Hi, my name is Jen Young, and I volunteer with the Conflict Resolution Center, and I was hoping to have some context first from Shawna, but I have to run, so she said, go out first. I've been involved for the last few years with, as a mediator, trained by the Conflict Resolution Center, working in small claims, working on divorce, but the thing that I think is the most powerful thing that we're doing right now is parent teen mediations that are most frequently requested by juvenile court, who could give us a call and say, look, before this kid can be released from juvie hall, we really need to have some work done with the family before the kid comes back into the family, into the circumstances that got the kid there in the first place. And the three hours that we spend with these families is just really incredible, as so often, I think about eighty-five percent of the time, we make a difference in how they relate to each other in that period of time. They learn skills to talk to each other. I'm just going to tell you just a few quotes from some of the evaluations afterwards. Here's some parents. "I was able to learn how to listen without being judgmental. My son opened up about issues at home. I felt a bit sad because I could have done something about it to resolve it, had I known." From some kids. "This meeting really helped the relationship with my mom. It opened up a new chapter in our lives. I feel so much better and relieved. I feel more open towards my mom, and I get why sometimes we argue a lot." "This is a safe way to let your parents know how you feel. Yes, why? Because I now know that I can talk to my mom about just about anything." We give them a way to learn how to listen to each other, hear each other, and it's really powerful. And I think the difference that we make on a family-by-family basis when this happens is going to really have a nice ripple effect in our community.
Mayor, can I ask the speaker a question?
Yes, please.
First of all, I love the Conflict Resolution Center. We use it for some of our own meetings, and I'm just wondering, you know, what you're telling us, you're getting more than you asked for. I'm trying to get to the reason that you're selling past the close. And I'm being perfectly honest with you.
The reason? Individually?
No, we love you, and evidenced by the fact that not only is the Subcommittee recommending giving you what you requested, but they also recommended giving you a COLA increase.
Right, that's correct.
All right, thanks.
You know, I think this needs to go to the whole crowd about this.
Yeah, I'm going to clarify, I'm going to clarify what we're doing. I think you should understand that it's not an issue to come up, because what we did is we allocated $275,000, and if you are up here and you got what you asked for, or maybe more, you don't need to come and tell us what you do. We value what you do.
Right.
I think this is probably an opportunity for, if there's some people here that maybe had money taken away, that maybe would be the people we should be hearing from.
Or just come up and say, thanks.
You know what? Thanks. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Shawna Mora, the executive director of the Conflict Resolution Center, and actually, I have been trying to get people here for about four months to thank you and let you know how grateful we are for your support. This is our thirtieth year for offering conflict resolution services to the Santa Cruz County, and certainly I did want to thank you, because you have been, the City of Capitola has actually supported the Conflict Resolution Center for years and always been very, very generous. The other thing I wanted to say is, thank you so much, Chief Escalante. I don't know if he's still here, yeah. And congratulations to the City of Capitola and to the Chief of Police for the excellent results that you got. I wanted to say that I'm grateful that you have a diversion program here in Capitola that helps to be able to not have kids go into the juvenile justice system. When that diversion doesn't work, we end up seeing them, because we end up seeing them through probation. So anyway, thank you so much. I did have my volunteers come here. We did want to have our first one come up, and she had to leave right away. We have another one that came down here from San Jose, would like her to be able to speak, and yes, please then move along to the people that want to talk with you about what they didn't get. So thanks.
And a simple thank you would be appreciated, okay? Thank you.
So yes, I made the long trip over the hill. I am a volunteer mediator as part of the Victim Offender Dialogue Program, and again, we thank you so much for your support of the CRC. As a mediator, it's been a tremendous addition to my own life as well, because not only do I get to work on the skills, but I get to work with teens and shop owners here in Capitola, working out issues that otherwise you'd see in the court system. So it's always wonderful to see a young person come out of these meetings and suddenly go, wow, I had no idea the impact that my shoplifting or my graffiti had on the city, and, you know, it's changed my mind, and it's set me on a different path. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Elaine Johnson, and I'm also from the Conflict Resolution Center, and I just want to personally say thank you for supporting the program that is helping so many people in this community to heal some really deep wounds from, personally, I do divorce mediation, something that is very, very difficult, that allows people to move on in a healthier way than if they have to go through the court system. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Lisa Berkowitz, Community Bridges Meals on Wheels, and on behalf of all of the seniors that we serve in Capitola, thank you so much for your generous support, and please do consider supporting all the services for seniors. They're having tough times, and they really appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
We know that that agency will help us with our tax measure for transportation, major beneficiary.
Good evening. I'm Marie Cabius, Executive Director of Big Brothers Big Sisters, and I too want to thank you for your support in all these years. You know, we're all about mentoring, we're all about kids, and keeping all of us safe in our prevention-based services, and I want to also remind you that all of our children need their families, so I hope that you would look really hard at finding the extra $5,000 to support the Parent Center as well as Campus Kids Connection. Those services for kids are keeping our kids healthy and happy and out of your jails. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm Dan Hayfley of O'Neill-Ciutat. I'd like to thank you for bringing us to our twentieth year. We'll be having our twentieth anniversary September 17th at the Seymour Center, and those of you who don't know about this event, you can learn about it at oso20th.org. And again, thank you for making a big difference in the lives of many, many kids. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Pat Dwyer. I am a relatively new grant manager at the Second Harvest Food Bank, and I am here also to thank you very much for your longstanding and continuing support of the Second Harvest Food Bank. You probably know, we provide food for between fifteen and eighteen hundred of the lowest-income residents of Capitola every month, and we, I'm just here to thank you. Thanks for the COLA as well. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Helen Uen Storey, the Assistant Director of the Community Action Board of Santa Cruz County, and we too also want to say thank you very much for your support of our rental assistance program efforts in Capitola. We're going to be coming back and giving an overall cab update at your September 8th meeting, so we'll go more into detail then, but at this time, I do want to introduce our new program coordinator for our rental assistance program, Lourdes Ariane Perez, and, yeah, and she'll, she'll provide some additional information on the eighth as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Helen.
Yeah, good evening.
Good evening. I'm Gary Edwards, Executive Director of Advocacy, Inc., Long-Term Care Ombudsman Program and Patients' Rights Advocate Programs, and I also want to thank you for continued and continuing support of our agency and our programs. We've got a good working relationship with the City of Capitola and with the Capitola Police Department. Thanks, and congratulations, Chief. One of the things the ombudsman does is investigate allegations of elder abuse, elder independent abuse in the long-term care facilities, and I think that the Capitola PD is really a model for how we'd like to work with police departments in Santa Cruz and San Benito Counties, so we greatly appreciate the contributions of Chief Escalante and his assistance with us, and thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Thanks, Gary.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. As you can tell by the suit, I am the directing attorney for Senior Citizens Legal Services and also the executive director. I wanted to talk a little bit about what we do, and some of my interns are here to talk about it. We had asked some of our clients to be able to come out to this, but your meetings are a little late for them. So I'm sorry, we couldn't have some of our clients to come out and talk. But I wanted to give you an overview of what we do for the citizens of Capitola. We see about a hundred people from Capitola every year. And we help people, not necessarily who have resources in other ways that they could find help and services. So we focus our dollars and our efforts on the people who have no other options. We are the safety net for them. So in terms of some of the cases that we've done in the last fiscal year for residents of the city of Capitola, we did six elder abuse cases, which is getting elder abuse restraining orders, protecting the residents of Capitola from someone who's either being financially or physically abusive of them. We did twenty-nine housing cases. That is defending people from eviction, helping them get their security deposits back, or protect their rights to have a reasonable accommodation in their rental situations. We did thirty-two consumer issues where we help numerous seniors who were victims of elder abuse and fraud. And that happens so much more often that I would like to see it. And sometimes it's very difficult to actually find a resolution or success in that. But that's one of the cases I wanted to talk to you about. We had a client who came in who was a victim of a very common fraud where someone calls up and says, this is your grandson. I'm in jail in Mexico and need some help. And of course, the senior then responds by, James, it's you. And they go, why, of course. And they instruct them to go and get money orders, get prepaid cards from the store, and they will call back and they'll read those numbers off to them. So we had a client who lost $5,000 in three separate attempts. $2,000 two times and $1,000 another time. We were able to communicate with his bank, explain the fraud to them, and the bank ended up eating those charges for that client. I'm amazed. And I can't tell you a legal reasoning that they did that, but sometimes we beg and plead. And I guess that's sort of what I'm doing here tonight. Because, you know, I'm really thankful to get the COLA, the cost of living adjustment. That certainly helps because the, the cost to give our staff health insurance goes up every year. And we are supported by a lot of state and federal money, which doesn't tend to go up with the cost of living. Now, on top of that, I'd like to say, please don't take away the big chunk of money that helps pay for that cost of living adjustment. We use those funds. Our budget is less than $300,000 a year. And that pays for two full-time staff, two part-time staff, rent, health insurance for our staff. We stretch those dollars as far as we can. Tomorrow morning, we'll be running a fundraiser golf tournament. And we use that to buy things that we can't buy with other funds, computer equipment, other things that we need to be there for the long term. So I'm telling you, we really stretch these dollars out as far as we can. We also help residents of Capitola with powers of attorney, with public benefits in terms of Medi-Cal. We help them enter the safety net when they have no other choices and they have no other options. And although I couldn't bring any of our clients here to talk tonight, I was able to bring some of our interns because we do a lot of our services through interns from UCSC and Cabrillo College at times. And they were going to come here and share some of their experiences with you also.
Can you tell us which bank that was?
You know, off the top of my head, it was a national
I was just looking for a random plug, a nice bank. I know there's, I know there's at least one of them out there, but if you can't recall, it's all right.
The problem is, I'm the executive director and directing attorney. I have Malia Powell, who's my staff attorney, who does the actual legal work.
Okay.
I have to try to keep the lights on, and I do some mobile home and some of the other cases. So I wish I knew more of it, but I will certainly get that to the, to the board so you can know. Thank you.
Did I hear you say you had a hundred clients in Capitola this last year?
You know, approximately every year it moves up and down because we do appointments. And we don't really advertise much more than the phone book, so it's whoever comes to us. Some years it could be low as eighties, some years it might be a hundred and five. But, you know, we average about, about eighty. And when I looked at it for the last fiscal year, which is July first through the end of June for last year, we had exactly 100 clients.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Shannon, and this is Brayden. We are volunteer interns at Senior Citizens Legal Services. And we are here tonight to tell you that we have firsthand seen the positive impact that this organization has had on the community. Both Brayden and I have witnessed and been a part of and defended cases where senior citizens have come into our offices and have been physically abused and have come in and have had illegal or improper notices from houses that they've lived in for 25 years. And it is all that they know. This is the place that they've either grown up in or raised their children in, and they are now being evicted improperly. We have both seen veterans who are sick and coming in begging for help because their social security benefits have been cut. And again, they are being, they cannot afford to live here. And that is simply because their social benefits are being cut. And we are there to give them expert advice or legal advice. We're just interns, but we advocate and work with attorneys. I'm personally working with a man who's from Capitola. And it's very similar to the case that Creighton was just talking about. He is a victim of a horrible, horrible phone scam. And he got a phone call from his grandson, who he thought was the case, and he ended up losing all of his money to the scam. And he came in and we're working with him in order to get his money back. This is somebody who I have sat down with numerous times and seen, seen the distraught that he's in. And he's a senior citizen. And so, yeah, those are some of my examples of people that we work with. And here's Brayden for his part.
All right. Thank you for your time. Many of our clients' only source of income is several or a few hundred dollars a month. Some of them are living in low-income housing. Taking legal action or getting expert legal counseling for them could mean giving up all of their grocery or rent money. I had a client in tears over the phone because she was being evicted and couldn't afford her rent or a new place to live. Senior Citizens Legal Services, we're there for those people. As Creighton said, we're their safety net. But we need your assistance. So thank you.
Thank you very much for that information.
Short people. Hi, I'm Jen Surechild. I'm the program director of Project Scout. Thanks for the money. But my boss is Clay Kemp, who is the executive director of the seniors council of Santa Cruz and San Benito County. And he was not able to be here tonight. But if he were here, and I hear his voice in my head, he would be saying, don't cut senior legal services. They provide services to the most at-risk people. I refer people because we do taxes, as you know, when people, stuff comes up. And we refer people all the time over there to get help. So fiscal fraud is a huge thing. And you can't, it's not something they can take on by themselves. You know, Human Care Alliance has always said, you know, we share the pain, we share the gain. You know, we would like you to find the money so you can give the COLA and give the, the three other groups their full, what they got last year, if you can. But don't cut services that are going to take away from people who are at so at risk. And I just, I just wanted to mention, since I have a minute and thirteen seconds, that coincidentally, I actually did somebody's taxes this morning from Capitola. And that will allow him, he's, he was only fifty-five, but we, we do all ages, but allowed him to go to Cabrillo and get FAFSA so he'll have money to go to college. And he's someone who has used other services in the community. But he's found that he had some serious health problems and is working his way back up and going back to get the education. So your money is going to good causes, but please do not cut senior legal.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to come up and talk on this topic? Okay, we'll close it and bring it back for discussion.
I have some questions for the committee.
Sure.
For Stephanie and Ed. What, and what brought this up was the fact that, you know, if there's a hundred clients in Capitola, I'm wondering what made you focus on these three groups to cut if they're serving Capitola? And I know Campus Kids Connection. What, what was it about these three groups that stood out that precipitated a cut?
Let me answer that. We were looking, we were just trying to figure out, trying to, you know, brainstorm on what agencies maybe were, were served. We always, there's obvious agencies that we see a lot of, they're more high-profile, other ones we don't hear about. And when the senior service came up, it was, it was, the discussion was it back in the day, when in the mobile home park, when there was problems in the mobile home park, a lot of the people represented by that park, and there wasn't, hadn't been that many inquiries at the city, if this is my recollection. There were not that many inquiries in the last couple of years. So there was no, say, more, no profile of this agency working in the city. We said, well, if there's not that many cases, maybe we can make a reduction here. So it was more of a like, we don't see them around presenting these cases as much as it used to be. And a lot of the rent control issues and problems and with mobile home parks had seemed to dissipate. So it looked like a likely place that we could make a cut.
Did we have the data to support the fact that there are a hundred Capitola clients? You know, at, I'm looking at a hundred clients at a hundred dollars per client.
It was not scientific, Michael.
It's a, it's a pretty, I was going to say cheap, but I'm going to go with a very affordable lawyer.
Yeah.
Well, the, the actual system, it's, it's odd. What we have is it says 650 clients. Part of the, the problem with the, I guess, the county-wide system is there's quite a bit of overlap in the client profile. So that's, we didn't have the exact data. Looking right now, it says 650, so.
I got it. And my position on this whole thing is, I think it's very important for us to stick to the maximum budget number that we set during budget for consistency. And we could either give everyone everything they asked for and stay within the budget, or cut a couple of people and give a COLA. So I guess my question to the audience is, all the pain and all the gain, everybody want to stay the same and get all the money?
But before, before you go to the audience, let me, let me give you the history because I mean, I'm just telling you.
I, 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 I want
Each of the 270
Other people want to go, but I want to remember, when you and I met years ago
Yeah.
And established the number.
Yes.
Okay, that was, that was a big step to go to, to say, we're going to find 275,000 dollars every year, for the next two years, to give to, to all these agencies.
Yes.
And when, when the list came back and their request was 274098, I said, we hit
Dancing in the streets.
We are dancing in the streets because we have allocated more than they have. And the question was brought up, well, we have an extra thousand dollars. Who asked for more money? Because there wasn't enough to give a COLA with a thousand dollars. There was a couple, and we said, you know, maybe it's not fair, you know, and it was actually brought up. If there's somebody that felt that there was a really need, we could allocate that last thousand dollars. You know, I hear the terms, they find the money. We did. There was a thousand dollars left over to allocate. And we didn't come up with anything. So that, and then we, we said, that's, we agreed on that. We walked away and closed, and then we had our first meeting. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Harlan, I had the first meeting. At that first meeting, no, there was not a feeling to make any cuts. And we, and we just said, we're just going to leave it like it is and come back to the council and present it with the 275.
Okay.
And then another meeting came up. And then that's where the request was, says, well, maybe we can go to some agencies that aren't, that aren't showing the big demand and allocate to others in, in an effort to give across the board COLA. And like I said, at that meeting, we came up with, with what I thought was a recommendation. And until just walking in here tonight, an hour ago, and finding out that, you know, there was, that was not happy with it. But I can go back to the first meeting and say, I was fine with 275 or 274, and everybody gets what they asked for. We're done.
We're done.
So Dennis, you had a comment before we?
Well, I, I can't see us cutting Senior Citizens Legal Services. No, you're telling me paying a hundred dollars a client to, to give that service.
Well, you can go back to that.
Let's start with that.
Sure.
Okay. Campus Kids Connection is a little bit different. It's mainly, it works very well through the private sector. They have the ability to raise money. We've, we fund them fairly, fairly heavy through the years. We give them 17,000 a year for that program. I'm a little disappointed they're not here tonight to fight for their money. And as with the Parents, Parents Center and Santa Cruz, both of those agencies aren't here. And, and to stay within, or at least close to our budget, I would, I would follow that we, we do as recommended from the, the committee, with the exception of Senior Citizens Legal Services, that we bring them to the full, back to the full 10,000 amount.
Well, I'll tell you, this, this has been really upsetting for me because, as these people know, I've been there for them for 26 years. So to have to, you know, make us this weird recommendation that I made, I'm, you know, I'm really sorry. You know, and I think the next day I went to talk to former mayor, councilmember Storey, and he said, that was a stupid decision. I said, well, of course it was.
Which decision was that?
Our decision.
Which, which one? The first one or the second one?
Well, our group decision that's here tonight. And he said, they've always had a philosophy to stick together. If, nobody should get cut. That they would get, get increases together or decreases, but nobody should get cut like that, I guess, unless there was something drastic happening. So anyway, I actually have talked to a lot of people today, and a former executive director of one of the nonprofits called me and offered to make an anonymous $3,000 donation, as the skateboard people did, to help fill this bucket. He said, how much do you need? And I said, well, we need about five. But he said, he would be very happy to donate 3,000. So I'm going to put that in the mix and see if we can't come up with $2,000 somewhere to make this happen. Two percent is nothing for a COLA. That is nothing for these people who have had so little increases over the last 10 years. I know they got something maybe last year. But, you know, our revenues are up. This is the best time to do it. Taxes are up, fines are up, sales taxes up. Everything's looking quite good in Capitola. We can afford to give a little more. There's not the will for it, and that's the problem. But there is the money for it. We can, we spend big money on all kinds of crazy things all the time. This is for people. This is for the services for people that need it. And, you know, I'm really getting tired of, of arguing about it every year for 26, I mean, we didn't have to argue about some years, but, you know, we've argued about it a lot. It shouldn't be something we argue about. These are contract services. They're serving people.
Stephanie, we're funding every, every
And they asked for 274, we gave 275. I, I don't see how we did a disservice.
Can I, can I ask, how does, how are the mechanics of the $3,000 donation worked into this? How can that happen? I know that we sometimes have a hard time
General fund.
No.
I'm into the question.
The $3,000 personal anonymous donation that you mentioned, how would that work, Mr. City Manager?
My initial thought is my, my recommendation would be that they would make that donation directly to the affected nonprofits rather than bringing the city into it. Bringing the city into it, frankly, the workload associated with taking in an anonymous donation would be challenging.
You deposit in general plan, uh, general fund, can't you?
I think with all the scrutiny's under our finance today, and I think we can bring the finance officer up here, I think that introducing funds like that would bring some kind of scrutiny. I just
Yeah. It just, it raises a lot of questions, this notion of sort of, you know, unknown money coming into the city. I think if somebody wanted to make a donation like that, they could obviously make the donation to the nonprofit. We do take in donations for existing city programs, but certainly wouldn't be done on an anonymous basis.
Well, you know, if we took in $3,000, we could make Campus Kids Whole and, and Parents Center, they could make that donation to those organizations, and it makes the whole thing.
I would recommend the other way. I would say, leave the Campus Kids Connection cut in place and use that 3,000 to cover
2,000.
It was a $3,000 donation, was it not?
Isn't it?
Oh, no, I mean, 2,000 Campus Kid cut.
No, I'm saying, get the $3,000 donation, have it go to Parents Center and Senior Legal Services, and that makes them whole, and it gives everyone a COLA, and we're done.
Second.
Okay, I just want to, I just want to understand what, what just happened. Okay. So you're going to leave the $2,000 from Campus Kids that cut? So you're going to leave the $2,000 from Campus Kids that cut, correct?
Correct.
Okay. The cut to Parents Center, that stays, that goes away?
Well, what I'm saying is, the, the donation goes to the Parents Center and to Legal Services respectively.
$2,000, $1,000 gets the...
Looks like...
Correct.
It's, it's actually $1,500 and $1,000, so...
Yeah, so that's only $2,500.
Yeah.
Whatever the case.
And that donation could, can go directly to those organizations.
Right. Okay, so those two organizations, that, that donor resolves the issue with the Parents Center and Senior Legal Services. The Campus Kids remains cut, and we give everyone a COLA, a 2% COLA.
Right.
Any idea what that number?
Well, it, well, from us, it wouldn't change, because there's no, we, we wouldn't change anything from what...
Our number stays at 274.
Or what we recommended in the second meeting.
That's, that's correct.
It would be what we recommended, where we'd be at $24,900.
$274,900.
$274,900, 100 less than what we budgeted.
$10 less.
$10 less.
Okay.
That's pretty good.
Well, you don't want to cut anybody, what you're saying.
We haven't cut, you don't want to cut Campus Kids Connection? You want to stand on Campus Kids Connection and go over the budgeted amount that we voted on?
Yeah. Because the problem with setting the budget, the budget amount...
Then we're wasting time, we should just take the vote.
I will do that. I just wanted, and they have, I wanted one last plea, okay? Because what we're, what we're lobbying now is, is the recommendation is, just be clear, we're going to cut $2,000 from Campus Kids. The private donor will be arranged to make contact with Parents Center and Senior Legal Services and distribute that money. It has nothing to do with us, nothing to do with us. We would just advise...
Yeah, but then they're cut for next year. You know, then they're, they're going to be down for next year for the Capitola funding. So, you know, that's the problem.
The time to make the plea for it is at budget time. And if we want to make it $300,000 next year, I might be persuaded to vote for that.
Then everybody needs to read all the applications by the budget and go through and do an analysis, as I did, of how many clients and what the programs are doing, et cetera, et cetera. Which we didn't do, and otherwise you cannot make an intelligent decision without analyzing all the applications, which we didn't do.
And this, this represents probably half of the organizations in Santa Cruz County. Believe me, if we opened our, our request again, which we didn't, it, we could, we could give $600,000 away easily.
I mean, we opened it this year, we said we...
Well, I think that we could argue about, you know, a client here and a client there, but I can't see anyone on this list that I don't like.
Do we add any, do we add anybody this year?
We did not add anybody.
We didn't really have...
I can't see anyone on this list that I would say take their money away completely or reduce them.
Just being, you know, I, I think the comment was made about our revenues, and I don't think our revenues are as bright as was, was reported. I mean, I, I, we can come up here and have a, a showing of that, but I think the thing that's important here is, keep in mind that the city of Capitola gives more percentage-wise to, to these groups than any city in this county, including the county.
And we're proud of it.
Honor percenting.
We're proud of it. We've done it for 30 years.
I, I think, you know, we, we want to give, we, the, the request was made, we honored the request, we tried to figure out a way. I'm, I'm willing to support the recommendation that you made.
And, and the, you know, if next year we feel that we're in a good enough financial position to expand our community grants beyond 275, I'm there with you. But just as a matter of principle, and the reason that we took it in two separate passes, which is, one, the budget, and next, the allocation, is to do just that, to hold to the budget and then produce the allocation. So this year, I think we need to hold to what we said was the 275.
But this was the budget year to expand it, because we had the means this year, we may not have it next year.
And it was never brought up at budget time, and that's the time we need to do it. And next year, if we want to go to 300 or 285 or whatever, then that's what we need to do.
So we have a motion. And it's, Dennis, did you second Mike's motion?
Yes, I seconded.
I like most of it, but I'm going to vote against it, because I don't want to cut any, so I'm sorry.
Well, that's...
I understand. No, I, I respect it.
I think, you know, we're, we're trying to acknowledge the process, and the process started long ago with establishing the number, and then that...
It started 30 years ago.
Well, I mean, we're, just with this, with dealing with this right now, we started with a number, we came up with a number we felt was a good number, and now we, and we distributed, and I can understand not wanting, I, I can understand that everybody out there stands united, and, you know, and the representatives not to take away, but if you have a donor that's willing to donate to compensate these other two agencies, then that's going to suck.
You find them next, I'm going to have to get money from them next year, too?
No. Next year, when it's budget time, we talk about the 280 or the 285 or the 290, whatever, and we all go in unison and say, "Yeah, it's time to increase our overall giving." And then we're there, and then we can work it from there.
This is a two-year budget, 275, 275.
We can, we can amend it at the next budget.
And we'll deal with that next year. So with that, I'll go ahead and, Sue, can we do a roll call, vote on this?
Councilmember Norton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Harland?
Aye.
Councilwoman Termini?
Aye.
Mayor Botorff?
Aye. That motion carries three to one.
Ed, can I make a statement?
Certainly.
This was my 16th budget hearing with community groups. For 16 years I've sat up here, and in my heart, I feel I've done right by this group. We've always funded higher than any other organization within the city, and I felt that when, when we were in bad times, you guys bared, bared with us. And we've done the best we can as a city for you, I think. And I'm hoping the council, as it carries on, will continue to do that. So, thank you.
Okay, that moves us on to the next item, is a introduction of an ordinance amending Title VIII of the Capitola Municipal Code.
Sure.
Good evening. This is a little staff report on the introduction of the ordinance amending the extended producer responsibility and responsible safe collection of unwanted pharmaceuticals and hypodermic needles, otherwise known as Sharps. I'll tell you where we're at. Since 19, 2008, the city of Capitola has participated in a voluntary program of, of this operated by the county. Currently, three pharmacies and the Capitola Police Department participate in the volunteer program. However, only one pharmacy actually takes back medicines and Sharps. In December 2015, the county board supervisors adopted an ordinance which established extender producer responsibility program for pharmaceutical and Sharps in the unincorporated area. The county ordinance shifts the management and costs of the program to the manufacturers and the retailers. The city of Santa Cruz recently passed a similar ordinance in June. Extended producer responsibility, EPR, programs already exist in Capitola for other products such as electronics, carpets, fluorescent lights, and mattresses. And these programs for pharmaceuticals also exist in other counties in the Bay Area, such as Alameda and Santa Clara, and other countries. The capital expense, EPR ordinance is similar to the ordinances passed by the county in the city of Santa Cruz. It requires proposals from, for stewardship plans from producers of pharmaceuticals and Sharps or stewardship organizations. It requires all pharmacies to take back unused pharmaceuticals and discarded syringes. Stewardship plans must include outreach and education to get this information out to, to people who, who need this. Producers and retailers are responsible for the cost of the program. Staff has contacted and spoken with all five pharmacies in, in the city of Capitola to let them know about this, and, and most of them were aware of the program in the county and, you know, received positive feedback. So I'm here for questions.
The, the city of Santa Cruz has already enacted this?
They, they passed the, the ordinance in June. They are waiting on the, the plan submitted by the stewardship organization.
And, and the other cities, are they, are they taking this up?
They, they are looking at it. So the, the city of Santa, it's a county passed it first, and they've actually received some plans, and they're just in negotiations to finalize it. The city of Santa Cruz was next in June, and we are, we are next, because currently the program is run by the county, so once the county gets their program run by the, the organizations, we will either have to find a, a new way to do it internally or move forward to, with a similar plan.
Larry, and there's a lot of different sizes of pharmacies within our community?
Yes.
And some of them are just personal sidewalks. Are they, are they going to have the same responsibility as...
So we, we focus the ordinance on prescription medicines, and so those are the pharmacies. In, in fact, the smallest pharmacy that we have is the one that does both medicines and Sharps. It's, the, the variation is actually in the corporate side. We have three CVSs now. I don't know if you, the target pharmacy is now CVS. Two of those do Sharps, but they don't do medicines. We're currently, Rite Aid doesn't do either one.
And they're going to be Walgreens pretty soon.
Possibly, possibly. So, and as far, I believe Walgreens has been kind of ahead of this as well, so.
Thank you.
What, are, any contact with Rite Aid? Are they, are they aware of this?
Well, I, I've spoken with the pharmacy manager, and they're, they're aware of it. I, we, I've also reached out to the, the stewardship organization that has proposed for the county of Santa Cruz, and they're aware that we're, we're moving forward with this as well.
Does, does not appear to have any opposition. They're just unaware of how they're going to implement it?
Well, yes, they'll, they'll have to submit a plan to how they're going to implement in the city.
Question? Anybody from the public like to come up and address this issue? Seeing none, we'll close it and bring it back.
Move item, item C, which is the introduction of an ordinance amending Title VIII of the California Municipal Code.
Do you want to speak?
Did you want to come up and speak?
Come on up.
No, I'm sorry, come on up. Didn't mean to close it that fast.
I need more knowledge of them than myself.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much. My name is Jenna Shankman, and I'm a community organizer at United Way of Santa Cruz County, based out of Capitola here. And I'm here, I work with community prevention partners, a coalition in our community that works on alcohol and drug prevention for youth and also prevention for substance use disorder. So based off of these areas, this is extremely relevant in terms of considering how we dispose of prescription medication and Sharps and looking at the impact we can have environmentally to reduce risk. I mean, we've seen that this has been increased, an increasing problem generally and in our community. And I have a, a letter here where we present some of the summary of local data that I want to share and pass out, but just want to highlight that in 2014, 6% of 9th and 11th graders and 17% of non-traditional students said that they used prescription drug medication that was not prescribed to them in the past 30 days. And knowing that this is largely because it's easily available in communities and left lying around, so to think about how we can expose, dispose that for the safety of our health and also for our environments, as, you know, it might be flushed down the toilet and affect water as well.
Thank you for supporting the plan. Okay. Anybody else from the public like to come up and talk to us? We'll go ahead and close that again. We had a motion and a second. And seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you for your good work.
Yeah, thank you. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Oh, sorry, last comment.
Can we open it back up?
I'll open it back up.
I would like to bring in front of the council, the proposal to, to support the, the bag ban that's going, is presently going as a state proposition, and we bring it to council for their support.
We put that, do we need to put that on the, is that a request to put it on the agenda?
Yes, it is.
Mr. City Manager, have that duly noted?
Absolutely. We've got to get the candidates to put it on their literature.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, one other point that, Council, Councilmember Norton brought up the prospect of pressure washing the, the bridge, and, and as the public works, my director thought more about it, I, I don't want to overpromise, underdeliver, the, the water from a pressure wash there would go directly into the lagoon. It seems improbable that there, between that and also the SoCal Creek Water District restrictions on cleaning, outdoor cleaning for things, it seems highly unlikely that it's going to be easy process.
Well, we power wash the sidewalks, they go directly in the lagoon?
No, it doesn't. It has to be captured. That water has to be captured.
It gets vacuumed back up, or it goes into the sanitary sewer system. So we're really, we were kind of brainstorming during the meeting.
Look at, look at our light posts out there. They're, they're turning black.
Well, you know, Dennis, the thing is, I, the thing we could possibly do is probably siphon the water out of this creek, but then we would still be adding contaminants back into the creek, because we, we have no way of capturing the water.
Are we talking about the bridge or the sidewalks?
The bridge.